Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the January 28th, 2020 school board meeting to order. Whether you are in attendance here or watching from another location, my colleagues and I are pleased you took the time to join us. We appreciate and applaud your commitment to partnering with us in support of our schools, our students, our staff, and our community. While the Board of Brevard Public Schools staff members are fully committed to doing our best to ensure excellence in Brevard Public Schools, we know that our success depends heavily on an engaged and committed community to work alongside us and help us to continually improve. Thank you for being active participants in the process. Pam, roll call please. Mrs. Belford?
Present.
Ms. McDougall?
Present.
Mrs. Duskovich?
Present.
Mr. Susan?
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell?
Present.
The Board will now hold a moment of silent reflection in memory of our BPS family members who have recently passed away. Alina Diaz, a custodian from Quest Elementary, and Duane Bass, a custodian from Bayside High. We invite you to join us. Thank you. Matt Reed, Assistant Superintendent of Government and Community Relations, will lead the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Ms. McDougall, do you want to start?
Sure. I want to give a shout out to let people know this is Mentor Month, and I want to thank everybody who participates and takes stock in children for their mentoring. And we always need mentors throughout our schools, so if anyone has a desire, please see any one of us up here at the dais. Also, I was able to visit several of my schools, and I want to give some shout outs to people who I passed out some of our impact pins. And also, I was able to, I was really excited about this one. I gave a shout out to Ted Stedman for a bridge builder in facilities because he does build bridges with our community every single day. So, and I still appreciate Sue's department, Ms. Hand's department. And Ted is pretty amazing in some of the things we ask him to do and how he does build bridges, so shout out to Ted. And then I was able to go to McNair, and I want to give a shout out to Penny Conwell. I hope I'm saying her name well. She's at McNair. I gave her a big dreamer because she is the dance teacher. And she is trying to incorporate more young men in this U. And so, instead of calling it dance, she's calling it just move. It looks like a lot of fun, and a shout out to her. Also, the ET person, Mr. Foster at McNair, who goes above and beyond. He is always there building bridges between staff, students, and he will step in anytime that he needs to. So, a shout out to Rod, Mr. Forrester, in the ET department at McNair. Then we have, what am I forgetting? We have two math teachers at McNair, Ms. Kindig and Ms. Harris, who, I can't remember which one does the ESE. But they both make math fun. There is a math bingo that I thought was the coolest thing. I thought, how come we didn't have that when I was a kid? So, she's making it a lot of fun. Both those teachers are making math fun and enjoyable, and kids are getting rewards for being on their best and learning math. Then I moved on to Saturn, where I happened to substitute one day. And I want to give a shout out to the whole Saturn math team. Again, these are phenomenal teachers who are working real hard to bring up our scores. And also, in Saturn, they have an amazing third grade team of teachers, and so, thank you to my third grade team there in Saturn and all the work you do. One of my favorite people there at Saturn also is, I'm a little prejudiced, but it's Ms. Jackie, who is the school counselor. If you ever need a timeout and you want to have a de-stem, she has the coolest office ever. She's got a zen sand table. When I was there, she was doing a group with kids, with our students, and you could tell that the stress level just comes down when you walk into her office. So, it's very cool. That was Jackie Small. I should get her last name. Very cool. There's a whole bunch more people, but I will save them for the next time. I just want to give a shout out to all the amazing staff that we do have here at Brevard.
Thank you, Ms. McDougall. Ms. Duskovich, would you like to go next?
Sure. I have two, because I think you all are going to cover some of the others from this past week. One is a thank you to the Daughters of the American Colonists and the United States Daughters of 1812. They have made it a priority to help make sure our students are fully engaged in learning about our Constitution and founding documents. So, they invited me to spend a luncheon with them. And the process was, maybe I'll even share the presentation with you all that I put together, because, you know, I hounded poor Dr. Sullivan back there quite a bit for stats and statistics and test scores for our students between civics and American government. And I was really able to lay out all that our students, when they're introduced to the Constitution, and it was interesting. And so, it also includes some ways that maybe these groups and other organizations can also contribute to donating pocket constitutions, although Dr. Sullivan says she has an app for that, so. It was a good afternoon, and I think it helped bring to the forefront some areas that we could grow probably on studying our founding documents here at the district. And the other one I have is not so much a thank you and shout out, but I'm going to shamelessly plug the Children's Hunger Project annual fundraiser on February 11th. I have to fill a table of 10. I have two more seats at my table if anyone would like to join me that day. It is of no cost, but they will, they will hand you for a donation, just so you know. It's February 11th. There's a board meeting that day, but the luncheon is over by 1 o'clock. Like, we were out at 1:01 last year. So, you can let me know offline. And I didn't mean just school board members. If anyone, we have two slots at my table. We'd love to have you. Thanks, Ms. Belford.
Thank you, Ms. Duskovich.
Oh, it's already on.
Yeah?
And I'll make a donation.
Mr. Susan, would you like to go next with recognition?
I'm good. Pass.
What? He's not done making his list.
No, I'm going to give a pre-camp date at the end of it. That's more for discussion in general, not a shout out, but there are some people involved. They'll get that.
Okay.
I want to clap, guys.
Ms. Campbell?
Hey, Mr. Susan. All right. I'll take up your time. No, I'm just kidding. So, first thing I wanted to share is that back in December, we talked about Tied Together, and they have been doing great work with our students, our male students. It's way more than just teaching them how to tie a tie. Just the mentoring that's happening, bringing in not just the leadership of Tied Together, but the dads and the men from the community at each school. But the question came up, what about the girls? And in multiple places, what about the girls? On Facebook posts, in our meeting, you know, in messages going back and forth. And so, I am just so thankful for Ann Conroy Bader and the leadership and her team at Junior Achievement, because they personally took that on, and she went to her board and said, hey, we want to be the people who kind of partner with Tied Together. So, whenever they have an event for our young men in our schools, we do one for our women, and they're not just sitting in class being bored or wondering why I can't. I learned how to tie a tie. And by the way, sometimes the girls do come down, and they have the freedom to do that. But she, Dr. Rendell at Cocoa Beach Junior Senior High, said, hey, we've got Tied Together coming on the 17th, literally the day after she had her board approve that, and can you do something for the girls? And she put together a fabulous panel of women, young women, who are in, not just in the steam field. They are, one of them works for NASA, one of them works for, oh, right, Harris, one of them worked for Rockwell Collins. One of them is a Florida Tech student, all in the aerospace industry. And these young women did a great job just sharing, not just about that field, but giving our young ladies some goals and dreams and practical tips for navigating the process of thinking about your future, that even if you're not interested in going into aerospace or engineering, just some things that would be really helpful. So, I'm just really thankful that she put that together so quickly, and I'm looking forward to continuing to see that program grow. It doesn't have a name yet, but real thankful for Junior Achievement, what they do in our schools. Last Tuesday was the first annual, or repeating, I guess it's been a while if they've had it before, Brevard Day at the Capitol. And so, we were able to go up, and Ms. Duskovich and Ms. Belford were there. And we, along with some of our business and community leaders, some of our city council members and city managers, and Chamber of Commerce people from end to end of our county, went up and were able to spend some time with not just our legislative delegation from Brevard, but got to meet with several of our legislative leaders from across the state. And I'm so thankful for especially Representative Saroy and Senator Wright, who kind of coordinated the day. Their offices did. I'm pretty sure that a few of their assistants did the bulk of the work. But just thankful for them coordinating that so that we could have a fabulous day representing Brevard. Thank you, Matt Reed, for having a table there representing BPS, and had lots of people come by and hear the great things that we're able to do. There were other organizations from our county there on one of the floors where people could walk around and see. So, that was a great day, and we're able to talk about teacher salaries, about affordable housing, about obviously the lagoon. That's high up on the rise party list from the chambers, but some other things related to our school, so that was good. And we also got to sit, it was very educational and helpful to sit in on a few of the committee sessions, and two of our board members got to speak at those and hear how things are going when it comes to security, mental health, and term limits, insurance, things like that, so. And then finally, one of my very favorite days as a board member, happened again last weekend, which was All County Day, and got to have an afternoon and evening hearing our students disperform so beautifully. And I just got goosebumps several times. So, so proud of all of our students and the hard work that our teachers do to get them prepared. Thankful for Cindy Johnson for coordinating it all, and they just outdid themselves with their performances on Saturday. So, a huge shout out to all our music programs at the secondary level for the great job that they did this weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I want to kind of piggyback on the trip to Tallahassee. We also had 15 of our student government leaders go to Tallahassee. They, well, I think the earliest I heard they got up was 2:00 in the morning, met here at 4:30, and drove to Tallahassee. And Mr. Reed helped coordinate our students to meet with legislators to share their support for the legislation around restricting vaping. And we've made presentation of the board, so we're certainly aware of the challenges and the impact that, negative impact that is having on our schools. I just have to tell you, our student leaders were absolutely phenomenal. They owned the day. These individuals were prepared. They were poised. They were professional. They walked into these ominous offices with state legislators and just so articulately presented their position. And other than an occasional introduction, we never had to say anything as the chaperones or the kind of helping them get from one place to the next, and it was just impressive to see our student leaders really use their voice in such a positive and impactful way. Saturday, in addition to the concerts, I had the privilege of being part of the Starbase ribbon cutting. Did you, did you mention that, Ms.? No.
No.
Ms. Duskovich was there with us. Starbase is a military program that sets up a facility on their base or affiliated, in this case, with Patrick Air Force Base, that accommodates our students to go and engage with military leaders, engineers, technicians, and so on. They bring the expertise, and they bring the programming to give our kids hands-on, real innovative and creative experiences. So, our fifth grade students are going to benefit. The Air Force Base invested over $200,000 in renovating this space near the base, and very excited that we'll have four or five schools be able to participate even before the end of the year, and looking for additional students to participate next year. So, I just want to do a shout out to General Schess, commander of the base, for making this a priority in his really short tenure at Patrick. When he came, first time I met him, he said, let's talk about Starbase. I want to make that happen. And he did in virtually a year, so just very appreciative of that partnership. Yesterday, I had the privilege to read with a bunch of students at Harbor City Elementary in recognition of Celebrate Literacy Week, Florida. This is the week, it says Literacy Week in Florida, and I got to read them the book, The Legend of Rock, Paper, Scissors. So, if you were wondering the origins of Rock, Paper, Scissors, the game, you want to take up that book, but it was a lot of fun. And if I may, take advantage of one more opportunity to do a shout out and share with you a community leader who has been a phenomenal partner with Brevard Public Schools. Last board meeting, I shared with you that while we were meeting at Rockage High School, Michael Kador, and we have to include his amazing bride, Cornelia, because he can only do a tenth of what he can with the support of his wife. But he has sponsored, he has championed, he has led what is called Infinite Scholars. And it is an opportunity that colleges come to a community, prepare to give students college acceptance letters and scholarships on the spot, in the moment, through meeting with students. So, I'm going to do a rundown of the last four years of what this has brought to our community. In 2017, we had 194 students participate and $3.3 million in scholarships awarded. In 2018, 385 students, over $4.2 million in scholarships. 2019, 454 students, over $5.1 million in scholarships awarded on that night. And two weeks ago, 562 students, over $8.2 million in scholarships awarded to our students. So, Michael called me a few days ago, and he said, hey, I want to do something for students in transition. He said, I'd like to make a contribution, donation to that effort. And I said, come to the board meeting, because I want to do a shout out for you anyway. Michael and Cornelia, would you come on up to the podium? He reached, I said, come to the board meeting. I want to highlight Infinite Scholars after I got the data. Almost 1,600 students impacted over the last four years, and almost $21 million in scholarships collectively provided. So, Michael, give you the mic for a minute, and then I want to present you with something.
Thank you. Well, good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to be able to serve our community. It's truly a blessing to be here before you, but my wife and I were just looking at being able, how can we give back to our community? And a lot of times, we focus on our youth and also our seniors. But I'd just like to be able to state that on behalf of my wife and I, we wanted to make a donation to the Brevard Schools Foundation, earmarking for our students in transition. We're very amazed at the number of kids who are homeless, and we just wanted to give a donation of $250 just to help with the cause, to help with our students who are in transition here in Brevard County. And as always, my wife doesn't want to say anything, and before she pinches me, I'm going to conclude that, so.
Well, before you go anywhere, we have a practice, and that is we take the opportunity to recognize individuals across our district and our community this year with what is an impact pin. And I just want to, on behalf of the board and the students that you are impacting in our community with our impact pin, having a strong effect on someone or something or someones, and making an impact on our district. Thank you for all that you do for Brevard Public Schools on behalf of the board and our students.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Kador, thank you for doing what you do. Misty's told us over and over again that that night is one of the most special nights that we have in Brevard Public Schools, and I really appreciate you coming here tonight and donating $250. I think Dr. Mullins should do a social media post and push out and have other people match it, because if there's an area inside our school system that is truly needed as the students in transition, and you taking a lead and just saying, hey, this is what I want to do unselfishly in an area that you hadn't been championing before, man, I mean, I would say it now, my wife would be mad because she watches this, that I'm going to give $250. You know, I'd go wash cars for $250 right now or something, but no, I'm just telling you, man, thank you for everything you do. If we had 100 of you in our school system, life would be a whole lot easier. So, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Does that conclude your recognitions for this evening, Dr. Mullins?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. I will wrap up the recognitions then this evening. Wanted to give a huge shout out and thank you to our friends at Who We Play For. They asked me to attend the Heart Watch Conference with them, I think, two weekends ago. And the Heart Watch Conference is a national conference where people come together who have lost, it primarily has been people who have lost children to sudden cardiac arrest. It has been expanding the past few years to also include survivors. And so, Sean Simu was there, Evan Ernst was there, Kurt was there. And they asked me to come and speak along with Evan about how to work with school districts in their area to address the heart screenings and that sort of thing, and we talked about some of the challenges in the process and some of the things that have worked really well and how we have managed to work together to get all through it. But so, thank you to them for including me. But I have to share with you all, as you walk into the conference, as you're walking down the halls of the hotel, there are tripods down the hallway with pictures. And they are, some of them are survivors, and some of them are students who have been lost, and they identify on there. But what it did for me was absolutely reinforce that we have done the right thing in Brevard. We are up to, I think, 11, maybe 12 now, students that have been identified in Brevard County with potentially fatal heart issues that have actually gone in and had surgeries. And that wouldn't have happened without, obviously, the support of you guys and the hard work of Chris Moore and her team in the process. And so, thank you to all of you who made that possible, because it truly is having an impact on lives. Also, want to give a huge shout out to the Titusville Rotaries. So, we have three rotaries in Titusville. We have the Sunrise Rotary, the Noon Rotary, and the Evening Rotary. The three rotaries came together with, actually, my nonprofit, Sm-Say Forever, this past Saturday to do a water safety day. But the really cool thing is that they sponsored 50 students from Coquina Elementary to come and bowl with their families during the event. And so, the assistant principal was there from Coquina, and all of the Coquina kids came and bowled. And we had Josh the Otter there, which you guys probably don't know Josh, but he's, you know, a life-size baby otter. Josh was a little boy that passed from drowning, and his parents started the Josh the Baby Otter movement, and they have books and all this stuff. So, Josh was there and took pictures with the kids, and we did raffles, and they had pizza and drinks. And it was just really great to see the kids and their families out having so much fun and mingling with other families that they didn't know from the school and that sort of thing. So, many thanks to the Titusville Rotaries for their efforts in putting all of that together and making sure that the students have that opportunity. And then I want to give a shout out to a couple of my North End folks who joined us at the meeting this evening. I know it's a long trek, but we appreciate you being here. I have Randall Clay, Bill Gary, Ruth, is your last name Gary? I'm sorry. Ruth is Bill's wife, but I always hate to assume last names because I've gotten pinched on that a couple of times. So, Bill Gary, Ruth Gary, and also Pastor A.J. Davis from St. James AME have joined us this evening. So, we appreciate you guys making the trek and look forward to having, hopefully, a good meeting for you guys. And that is all I have as far as recognitions, so I think that is bringing us to the adoption of our agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Ms. Belford and members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 22 consent items, four action items, two of which are public hearings and five information items. You also have the yellow supplemental agenda, which are changes made to the agenda since being released to the public. Items A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F12 on instructional staff recommendations, and G34 on attendance boundary proposals for school year 2020, 2021. All received revisions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Please vote.
There's two of them. Maybe the flashing one?
I think we're getting this.
Hmm?
We're getting it.
Yeah, we're getting it.
Are you guys able to vote?
I voted.
You did?
I did.
Oh, go down to the bottom over here. You got it?
Yeah.
East side got it.
And I'm going to apologize ahead of time. For those of you who don't join us on a regular basis, we are utilizing new technology for our agenda. And this is only our second meeting with it, so we're still working out some kinks along the way.
It's moving quicker.
Is it?
We got it over here.
East side, you got it?
Nice.
I think actually we're the west side.
Gives it down there.
Do you have a count on that vote, Pam? I'm not seeing.
Five to zero.
And the motion passes five, zero. All right, Dr. Mullins, would you please let us know about the administrative staff recommendations?
Yes, Madam Chair and members of the board, there are two persons on this agenda item for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. Ms. Escobar, do you have a count on that vote?
Five to zero.
The motion passed five, zero. We are now at public comments. The school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes. We actually only have two speakers this evening. So, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you'll be asked to stop and allow the next speaker his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chair. The chair may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, the chairman may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or are watching from home. Our speakers this evening are Anthony Calucci and Vanessa Skipper.
My name is Anthony Calucci. I'm the president of the Brevard Federation of Teachers. As of today, there are still 60 instructional vacancies in our district. This means there are hundreds and potentially thousands of students who either do not have a certified teacher in front of them or are being taught in classrooms that exceed class size amendment. Across the state, 300,000 students started school without a full-time permanent teacher. It is abundantly clear that we have a problem in Brevard and in the state. Tonight, I'm here to offer a solution to this problem, a solution that I believe will save the district money. I want to start off with a quote I once heard about school reformers whose actions led to this current teacher shortage. That quote is, "You can't fire your way to Finland," which means that you can't keep firing bad teachers to reach the levels of student success in Finland. This is a flawed idea. In a low-paid, high-stress profession that is constantly under attack by legislators, there aren't scores of qualified people lining up to fill vacant positions. So, just like public school teachers who can't choose the students in front of them, BPS must work with what they have and develop employees until they reach their potential. The problem is, BPS doesn't have enough staff working on developing teachers who are in need of more help. Specifically, we only have three district peer mentor teachers for nearly 4,900 teachers. Our IPIS evaluation manual notes that BPS makes available to all teachers the services of district peer mentor teachers. It goes on to describe peer mentor teachers as highly trained and qualified professionals who work with new teachers, teachers experiencing difficulties, or any other teacher who could benefit from a professional collegial service. I will tell you that our district peer mentor teachers do amazing work, and I believe most admins in the district see their value as well. But there are only so many teachers and schools they can get to every day. When I think about new teachers who left or were terminated in only a few weeks' time, or frustrated teachers who resigned because they couldn't take it anymore, I wonder if those teachers, if those teachers worked with a district peer mentor, their stories would have been different. I wonder if it would have been different for our students who lost their teachers. I wonder what it does to a kindergarten student to lose their teacher after a few weeks. Studies show that it costs districts approximately $15,000 for each new hire, including district and school expenses related to separation, recruitment, hiring, and training. These investments don't pay their full dividend when teachers leave within one or two years. I would strongly suggest you look at a tool called What's the Cost of Teacher Turnover at learningpolicyinstitute.org that estimates the cost of 400 teachers leaving a suburban district at $4.4 million. With that said, I'm recommending that BPS create at least two more district peer mentor positions next year. Essentially, if BPS went ahead and did that, and between the five mentor teachers, they prevented six teachers from resigning, it would, at the very least, be a cost-neutral decision. At the school level, the positive impact that improved, come on, improved pedagogy, classroom management, smaller classes, and less upheaval due to turnover would certainly
Ms. Skipper.
Do better.
There's nobody here. Can you let me finish?
There's nobody here.
You hold everybody to the three minutes.
You and Ms. Skipper, Mr. Calucci?
You can give me extra time. No, no. Vanessa Skipper, Vice President, Brevard Federation of Teachers. For everyone in the room and those listening at home, I'd like to give an update on what is happening in Tallahassee this session. Again, we are asking everyone to do their part in contacting our local delegation regularly throughout the session. Not just one phone call, not just one email, daily contact to our legislative delegation. An easy way to do this is to visit feaweb.org, go to Issues and Actions on the left tab, and click the 2020 Legislative Session to stay up to date and involved. You will be able to enter your address, and it will take you directly to your legislators. We encourage everyone to contact the entire Brevard delegation, even though you may not obviously reside in every single district, Senators Wright and Mayfield, and Representatives Placencia, Altman, Saroyan, Fine. The decisions they make affect all of us in Brevard regardless of whose district you might live. Senate Bill 62 is one that we are watching. It's part of the salary puzzle. An amendment to this bill was dropped yesterday, and the bill is scheduled to be heard in the Senate Appropriations Subcommittee on Education at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow. Our objectives remain the same: salary increases for all, no bonuses, and salary decisions must be made at the local level. We continue to work to influence the outcome of any legislation dealing with pay and encourage all those listening to do the same. Know that the Senate plan currently does not include bonuses and does include all teachers, including pre-K, but it does not cover our education staff professionals. While BFT does not negotiate for our education staff professionals or our school administrators, we recognize the valuable role they all play every day for the success of our students. I cannot say it enough. We cannot be the only ones advocating for this. We must all work together. So, if you're listening, have you emailed? Have you called? Have you tweeted a legislator? The time is now. The next bill we're watching is Senate Bill 486. Senate Bill 486, sponsored by Rob Bradley, would repeal the Best and Brightest program. The bill passed its first committee stop when it received unanimous support from the Senate Education Committee. It will be heard again tomorrow. Best and Brightest has been flawed from the very start and has failed in its stated purpose of recruiting and retaining teachers. When it comes to educator compensation, Tallahassee should restore local control and let school districts and local unions bargain how to best determine educator pay. Florida's legislators should listen to educators and use the $300 million saved by repealing Best and Brightest to increase salaries for all educators, not just classroom teachers. So, again, have you called? Have you emailed? Have you tweeted? Have you tagged a legislator on Facebook? It's not one and done. There are around 50 days left in session, and everybody should be doing their part every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skipper. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to speak to the board is appreciated. That moves us into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins.
Ms. Belford, if I may, just in response to Mr. Calucci's comments in support of our peer mentor teachers, thank you for supporting the work of our peer mentor teachers. I did want to add, we do have in our schools mentor teachers as well that are assigned to new teachers, and they're provided, albeit a very small supplement. But we do have that effort as well. And I want to give the recognition and to our teachers in the schools as well that are working with our new teachers also. So, thank you.
Thank you.
There are 22 items under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Going once, going twice. All right, then I will entertain a motion to accept the consent items as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Eskovich. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five, zero. Thank you, Ms. Eskbar. All right, we will move on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins.
There are a total of four action items on this evening's agenda. The first one is on department-school initiated agreements.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote.
I like singing. Okay. Oh, I thought you were cutting out my singing. That's what it was. I heard you were gonna sing.
The motion passes five, zero. Dr. Mullins?
Next is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan. Who seconded?
Me.
Ms. McDougall. Sorry. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote. The motion passes five, zero. Dr. Mullins?
Our next, our next item is to hold a public hearing and approve the Brevard Public Schools Student Progression Plan for the 2019-2020 school year.
Is there anyone who has come here tonight who wishes to publicly address the Student Progression Plan for the 2019-2020 school year? Is there anyone who's come here tonight who wishes to publicly address the Student Progression Plan for the 2019-2020 school year? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five, zero. Our last, oh, Dr. Mullins, I was going to be you.
Our last action item is to hold a public hearing and approve the attendance boundary proposal for the school year 2020-2021.
Is there anyone who has come here tonight who wishes to publicly address the attendance boundary proposals for school year 2020-21? Is there anyone who has come here tonight who wishes to publicly address the attendance boundary proposals for the school year 2020-21? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Campbell.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. McDougall. Any discussion? Please vote. Did everybody vote? Ah, the motion passes five, zero. Did you get it on your end? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. We're now at the information items, which are items that may be brought back later for board consideration. No action will be taken on these items this evening. Dr. Mullins?
There are five information items on this evening's agenda, all of which are policy revisions.
Does anyone want to discuss any of these items? Okay, does any board member have anything further to report? Mr. Susan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to first off say thank you. I met with, took two pre-K teachers up in Tallahassee that sat back and walked the halls to find out where the pain points were with making pre-K teachers certified in the state of Florida. And we immediately, once inside some of the discussions with leadership from Representative Graul and others who are currently working on policy bills for pre-K in that area of early, early development, it became evident that some of the things that were being communicated to our representatives and senators in Tallahassee may not be statistically backed up and may need some further discussion. And I did want to give, first off, the credit to the pre-K teachers that were involved in this process, Ms. Webb and Ms. Hardy, but also to the state representatives and education policy staff in both the House and the Senate who were willing to listen. Because a lot of times, when they're taking on an issue, you don't want to listen. And having that open dialogue with respect on both ends is what ended up happening. So, I wanted to go over some of those quick points. What, the first piece that was argued is that we choose to voluntarily provide VPK, right? And they said, well, it's not an issue because you choose to do VPK. The problem with that is we don't choose to do Head Start. We don't choose to do L. We don't choose to do VE. We don't choose to do ESC, okay? So, the majority of the services we're providing for pre-K are not chosen to do. It is required to do, okay? The next step is, is that ESC, in every single situation required by the state of Florida, is required to have a certified teacher. So, if you have a VPK classroom that has an ESC student, you should be providing those services to that student in that classroom. So, we are talking about creating and certifying teachers in only VPK classes that are not ESC, because Head Start requires it, L and VE requires it, because those are ESC, and all ESC designated. So, you're talking about a very small percentage of classrooms that this is. So, that was the first misconception. And if you guys need any help, like, follow up on any of it, it's great. The next misconception that we had was that it would decimate private providers inside of a school district because of we would be, because we would be providing certified teachers in the school district, it would legitimately decimate the other providers. So, we looked, spent four hours last night looking at all of the data. And what we found was, is that the actual school districts that have certified teachers inside of them already like ours, across the state of Florida, you can look back at the five years' worth of data and find that in actuality, the growth percentages can remain consistent. So, there's no, as we had a school district that had certified teachers that we were providing already, that we would then take over all of the other programs. It just doesn't happen. There's no statistical data anywhere. And that's backed up by three other individuals at the state that we requested from the DOE. So, that was a misconception. There was also a misconception that if you extend drop, that it's going to increase the budget at the state level for the DOE. So, we went back and started looking at each one of the pre-K teachers that were inside of our system that we knew that, and said, how's this? And statistically, this was difficult to find out. But what we found inside of our district was that if a pre-K teacher was coming to drop and they could no longer extend, that all they did was jump up to kindergarten, which is our biggest fear. Because instead of having an educated person with all that experience staying in pre-K for the extended time that we need them, which we need, we know the 60 vacancies, is that we need those people there. They're jumping up. So, the cost to the district, whether they're moving to K through six, or they're moving to the district as directors or anybody else, is never going to be the same. Because if those teachers want to continue to those teachers want to continue to teach, they're going to teach and find a way to do it. So, there's no consistent, there's no extra cost in those areas either. The other issue that we had is that they said that if Best and Brightest was going to cost, it would cost an expansion of Best and Brightest, and we know that that's not true, because Best and Brightest is a set amount of money that's divided out among however many teachers. So, there was literally no extra cost that we could find. The argument of making them certified teachers would expand and hurt the private schools was not there. So, we started looking at it, and here's what was the aha moment that was the most amazing thing that I had last night, was the simple fact that our certified teachers in pre-K school districts showed an increase of kindergarten readiness for those school districts. So, our most needed population, which is our underserved and our ESE populations, had higher rates of gains in school districts that had certified teachers, as opposed to the ones who had not. And not only did they have increase of career readiness through our Flicca's testing, they also had decrease in ESE designations from K through six. What does that mean? That means that our targeted populations of ESE and our other areas are being served before they come to school. They're getting the services prior to, and we're not spending kindergarten classrooms that are actually being taken over while they're trying to apply to get these people's services for four, six, eight months. And we all know that. So, it was a huge aha moment in the fact that, look, okay, we can make an argument that these things are going to cause it, but then to see the statistical data of our pre-K teachers, that they rock, and that they actually are doing an amazing job, which we know, but the fact is, is that the more of a job that the pre-K teachers do, our kindergarten, kindergarten readiness, K through six is ready. And I just, I sat there and I couldn't believe it. So, anyways, we've sent the information up to the state, the staffers, everybody else. We're moving back and forth. I met with Ms. Mills today, who is the guru of all of pre-K and preschool and intervention, and I met with her, and she said she'd sit down and work with this. But I wanted to give you guys news, that there's nothing that's been presented so far that is a negative, and we've actually been able to educate all of them on what was possibly wrong. And on top of that, we rock. So, I wanted to, I wanted to say that. I mean, this is good people. And anyway, so that was a good thing, and I wanted to say, especially Michelle Webb, Ms. Hardy, Michelle Gaynor, Ms. Dunwoody, those pre-K teachers, there's literally sixty-four hundred pre-K teachers throughout the state of Florida now that are working in the leadership committee members' districts at schools that are now prepared, once we finalize all of this, to push it up to their members so that they can then understand that their members will be getting a phone call, not from us over in Brevard, but their local pre-K classes inside their district. And I've never seen, literally, an organization, a group of people, doing what they're doing. So, a lot of credit go to our pre-K teachers, and thank you to the union for working with those guys, because they, you know, they help out when they needed some of the extra time off and stuff like that. So, that was it. So, that was the first one. Does anybody have any questions for our awesome pre-K teachers? Hmm? Because I'm officially their representative now.
Can I just, can I just say thank you to you, Mr. Susan, for the work that you've been doing with those teachers?
I get like ten percent. They do all the work.
Well, I was going to say, yeah, just a little bit to you, mostly to them, because I know that they're awesome and working hard every day for our kids.
That's Michelle Webb, Ms. Hardy, Ms. Gaynor, and Ms. Dunwoody, just so you know.
Yes.
Say those names. Okay, sorry.
Awesome. So, thank you very much for your support of them, and certainly to everyone who is helping that movement go. I think we all understand the huge importance of early childhood education and making sure that we do it right. So, thank you.
Beautiful. And then I said one more thing.
Yeah.
So, I met with, we have the PSYAC Insurance Committee meeting coming up, and me as the former representative, I wanted, I met with Dr. Mullins, and Dr. Mullins followed up with a follow-up email, and he said, "Hey, this is what we discussed." But I did want to put some things that the PSYAC has been concerned about on the agenda so that when we can discuss it later, when it comes up. One of them was, we need education inside of our schools, and how that would happen if we were going to do a plan design change, right? And I don't mean to steal your thunder in any way. The other thing is, we've had some extreme cost concerns inside of our specialty drugs in the pharmacy and some other areas. So, what is the solution, right? Not, not, "Let's look at it," but what is the solution, right? Also, how do we create a possible direct local group? So, grab the parish, the health first, and say, "What will you offer to go direct?" as opposed to going through the usual process? Or steering to less-cost alternative in a narrow network plan? And that was presented at the PSYAC, which I watched that video, which was awesome. And then, the other piece is, is that work with the county. So, about four months ago, I met with VISCO, and Jerry said he would definitely be willing to work together on our plan, as far as plan design. So, we just need to reach out to him. And then, the other piece would be to prioritize our costs before, with the insurance companies and everything else, before we talk about raising the rates to the teachers. So, and I think we all agree on that. So, I just wanted to say that was the piece before we get to the meeting, and I wanted to just give you the heads up. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Ironically, one of our PSYAC members was in Tallahassee on, it was Tuesday, right?
Brevard Day.
Yeah, on Brevard Day. They were up there working on that PBM bill, advocating, which ended up not being heard in committee, so they were a little frustrated. But they were up there, actually, I think they were there Tuesday and Wednesday, so lots of good advocacy going on there. Any other?
Which is being sponsored by Senator Wright.
Yes.
I remember when he said that.
Yes. Any other board members have anything further to report? Dr. Mullins, do you have anything else you wish to add to the meeting? All right, there being no further business, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.